All right, let's call this meeting attention, everybody's attention. We'll call this special meeting the Board of Trustees order. First of all, I want to say normally that this job falls on our chairman, Michael Burgoff, but he is traveling far out in the country, in Israel, right now, and is not able to join us. He is certainly in spirit and heart, but we'd like to thank everybody in the Purdue community that's come out in media for joining us in person at this extremely historic event for our university. Due to the timing and how it's worked out, we were not able to have this discussion last week in our Board of Trustees meeting in Fort Wayne. I think you'll understand why as we go further and whatever, so that's what prompted this special meeting that we had this week. But this is an extremely important strategic decision for the university that I'm convinced we're in the right move and it will help Purdue as a land-grant university in our mission into the 21st century. So I'm grateful to have this opportunity to consider it, especially called meeting today, and I think you'll all be pleased when you hear all of the details. Some of us, the trustees, are participating remotely. I want to make sure they're on. These proceedings are being conducted under our policy of electronic meetings, which allow us to do this in certain circumstances. In addition to me, I believe we have trustees Castagna, Spurgeon, and Thompson on the phone. Vanessa, Tom, and Don, are you on the phone, and can you hear us?
Hi. This is Gary.
I can hear you.
Well, let's learn all to speak at one time.
I can hear you as well, Gary.
Okay, everybody's here, that's great, thank you. Just a reminder, since you're on the call, please speak up so that we can all hear you. First, I'm going to ask Assistant Secretary Jim Palmer to conduct a roll call meeting of the trustees. President Jim, please.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Castagna.
Here, thank you.
Trustee Spurgeon.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
Trustee Beck.
Here.
Trustee Beatt.
Here.
Trustee DeCraeger.
Here.
Trustee Klipsch.
Here.
Trustee Lehman.
Here.
Trustee Mann.
Here.
And it's noted that Chairman Burgoff is not available.
Thank you, Jim. Now on today's topic. For starters, I want everybody to realize and understand that this board has met several times over the last few months to discuss this opportunity very thoroughly, and we've obviously had to take a little bit different course than we normally do on these types of decisions, that I think you should understand why. These discussions were held in executive session for a couple of different reasons, and right at the top of the list, obviously, is to preserve confidentiality. Let me explain that briefly. First of all, the other party that's involved is a public company, and those of you that are familiar with the Security Exchange Commission's rules and regulations, they take great interest in making sure that any type of action like this is done in confidentiality and that nondisclosure materials or whatever are not shared. So we were absolutely required to do this in the way that we did it. The board has discussed it, and then really, we're not able to discuss it with anybody that had not signed a confidentiality agreement and needed to know until today. And believe me, we've all been anxious to be able to do this today, so we're pleased to be finally going public with it and get your input. Second, under state law, we have some of the similar requirements that we're legally obligated to safeguard trade secrets, and certainly, this was considered proprietary information and entrusted to us. So the state law also told us that we had to conduct in this process. This entire concept has been considered by the other party to be a trade secret, and we respect that, and we signed very strict nondisclosure agreements with them before we ever started. So for these reasons, we've had to take a little bit different course, and I hopefully you'll understand that. Our discussions to date have been carefully managed in order to make sure that everybody does it the way that the law requires, but we are extremely grateful, finally, we've gotten to this point, and now we can talk about it and share and get your input, because there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made, a lot of input that needs to be gathered from the community that we serve, so we're off and running. First, I'd like to have President Daniels go through the opportunity and explain to us exactly what we've been working on, please.
Right, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We just briefed our Purdue faculty, leadership at least, about this. We've been eager to do that as well, but other than that, this is the first discussion, and this is a discussion really for the benefit of all our other stakeholders around the Purdue family, including all the taxpayers of Indiana. So I'm going to take a few of your minutes to explain what it is we are about to do and why. We've been embarked now for five and a half months on a project we gave the codename MORL, and for reasons that I think will quickly be evident to you, but you all know that Justin MORL was the father of the MORL Act, which gave birth to the land-grant mission which Purdue has pursued for 150 years now, and very proudly so. Abe Lincoln and Justin MORL were determined that the benefits of higher education no longer be limited to the wealthy and the privileged and the elites of society, but be thrown open to all those with the capability of taking advantage of them. And these days, that has become harder to do. We live, unlike Justin MORL and his allies, we live in a time when post-secondary education is not merely an opportunity for the broad middle of society, it's an essential. And not a day goes by that there's not a commission, a report, another study lamenting and documenting the fact that people without some post-secondary education, preferably a college degree, a bachelor's degree or beyond, are at a handicap in a knowledge-intensive society. There are 56 million of our fellow citizens who went nowhere past high school if they got there at all, and not surprisingly, high percentages of minorities, recent immigrants, and so forth are in that category. Secondly, there's an additional 36 million who got some college but never finished, and they are slightly better off in terms of their lifetime income prospects than those who stopped at high school, but only marginally so. There is no priority higher for our Indiana Commission on Higher Education, our other public officials, and this is probably true in every state in the Union, in getting at this problem. And over and over, our commission, the legislative leaders and others in our state who have responsibility for the well-being of today's citizens, the strength of our economy in the future, come back to this subject. What are we going to do about those who missed their opportunity the first time around, and will not have a fully productive and successful life unless somehow they add skills and credentials? So that's the first of the three realities which led us to the decision that the board will be voting on in just a few moments. The first reality is there are millions, three-quarters of a million in this state alone, a state of 6.6 million, astonishing number to me, three-quarters of a million who started college and didn't finish, and then, of course, others who never even were able to start. And facing that reality, we reach the obvious conclusion, we cannot fully live up to our land-grant obligations or pursue the mission that everyone at Purdue embraces so enthusiastically while ignoring a number of people this big, while ignoring a need this so plainly unmet. A second reality, which is obvious to all, online education is growing fast and is destined to grow further in ways that none of us can fully anticipate right now. In just a two-year period recently, the most recent data which we have, the percentage of undergraduate students pursuing an exclusively online degree doubled. I don't know where this line's going, and no one here does, but we know what direction it's going. And not simply the extent, but the sophistication, the effectiveness of learning digitally is probably going to surprise us with its speed. That's at least been the pattern with so many other technologies we can name. Purdue University has been basically a spectator to this growth. We have a few graduate programs. Everyone on this particular slide is a graduate program. We are growing fast in that area based on other decisions made recently, and seven at least of these programs are new this year. So we're in motion on that front. But when you look at undergraduate programs by themselves, we have not begun, and we have decided frankly that we didn't have the wherewithal to do so, at least on our own. We came then to this conclusion, without knowing the full dimensions of the online revolution in education and where it will go, we know that it'll be bigger tomorrow than today, and we reluctantly come to the conclusion that we are not equipped presently to thrive, let alone lead, in that world. Because the third reality is, after a very careful study that was sometimes painful to recognize, we did determine that this is not a capability we can build ourselves. Oh, we could try, but we would spend millions and millions of dollars coming from way behind, trying to catch people who are more expert, more seasoned, more nimble, very, very doubtful prospects of success. And we might join that group, and it's not a small group, of universities who have blown a lot of money and a lot of energy and don't have much to show for it. We took this, look, it took us a year to do it, and most of that time, a lot of our faculty were involved, everyone's input was invited, and late last summer, at its August meeting, the board made the strategic decision that we would invest in graduate online education, but that we would not embark or try to embark on our own down this very uncertain and probably very expensive path on the undergraduate side. This will show you one reason why. I'd like to think in the future we'll do better than this, but this is the trajectory that at least one of our programs took to go from conception to market in the online space. Three years, when those who are active in that sector these days typically get a program from conception to offering in three months. I hasten to point out, this is the abridged version of the timetable. Therefore, the logic and the reality that we were forced to recognize brought us to this understanding. To be a 21st-century land-grant school, to meet the obligation, really, the great opportunity, the noble opportunity that we've always embraced here at Purdue, we must be active in online education in a way we are not now, and we would have to acquire those capabilities. And that led us to what we have called Project MORL, a step we asked the board to ratify and to formalize today, the acquisition of a leading online university. I want to talk about that university and its attributes before I name it. The benefits, I hope the previous few minutes have already made plain to you, we will become a 21st-century land-grant school by doing this, we'll be well-positioned for an online future, with whatever speed it comes, whatever direction it takes. We will have available to our faculty here and at our regional partners, one of the finest online infrastructures in the marketplace today for potential utilization in new offerings originating maybe on these campuses, maybe on the new university campus we're about to inaugurate. And I'll say, without saying more, that the arrangement that we have come to is financially positive for Purdue University. In a modest way, in the first few years, but with any success, and there's very good reason to suspect that success can come, could be very financially positive for us. What we've been calling, and MORL University looks a little like this, they are accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, the exact same agency that accredits Purdue, and will be here next year working on our decennial accreditation. MORL University was fully accredited last year for the next 10. They're known very, very well and well-understood by those whose job it is to validate quality in higher education. They happen to have about the same number of students as the West Lafayette campus. They conferred 12,700 degrees last year. They have a faculty that's, again, coincidentally roughly similar to the one here, over 1,000 of their faculty have earned a doctorate. Their average cost to degree is $35,000, therefore, less expensive than almost all residential options available to students here or in our counterparts elsewhere. And I picked just one of several examples, something that really impressed us about MORL, was the high standards they apply, the high integrity they represent, and the protective outlook they take toward their students and their future success. One example is that at this university, a student gets a full refund if, up to three weeks after enrolling, if he or she finds that it's just not going to work. And given that most of their students, as you're about to see, lead much more complicated lives than the 20-year-olds who are in and outside this building, it's not at all uncommon for one of these enrollees to realize it's just not right for them, or it's not right at this time, and they are not at any financial risk in making that choice. MORL has a narrower range of offerings than we do, that's to be expected. They are very fixed on the career improvement, the career prospects, the life prospects of their students, and so they tend to emphasize curricula that are very directly relevant to the workplace. That's what they look like today. Did I skip, I'm sorry. This may be the heart of the matter, the contrast between the student body, the population that they have been serving, and we hope to serve in even larger numbers in the future, the contrast between that and either our West Lafayette or our regional populations is very, very stark. This is what their 32,000 students look like, three-quarters female, well over half, over the age of 30. Most are working, more than a majority, a majority are first generation. And using the National U.S. Department of Education's identified risk factors, this is by any measure a high-risk population, exactly the kind of folks who, without genuine excellence in the university providing their education, are less likely to succeed. Here are those risk factors listed on the right. You'll see that five out of six of MORL students have three or more of these six, and well over half have four or more. And yet, they achieve great success. Comparing the pre- and post-income numbers, two years and five years out, MORL graduates see very dramatic improvement in their life circumstances and their ability, whoops, to pay for themselves, their families, and their dreams. And very significantly, the more risk factors, as you see on the right, the more risk factors a student has, the greater the incremental chance of graduation from MORL versus national standards, national averages. It's a very impressive performance in a very, very tough environment. Those who do make it through MORL University and graduate, not surprisingly in view of those data, are pleased that they did. These numbers look a lot like Purdue alumni numbers, but better than many, many schools can boast. This is the process that trustee Lehman was talking about, about a five-and-a-half-month process from initial conversations through due diligence up until today. We've had along the way, we've opened and had multiple conversations with the Higher Learning Commission. Again, they know both universities very well, and so they're already very well aware. Following the vote today on Monday, or by Monday, we will file the full dossier with the Higher Learning Commission and start their process, leading, we trust, to their approval later this year. The due diligence we've done falls rather neatly into three categories. I've spoken to academic quality already, I made some mention of that we believe this is a very sound financial transaction for Purdue, very protective, in fact, potentially very positive for our future, and we do believe that properly launched and run, this will be very positive for the reputation of our school. And it's obviously a major goal we all have to make certain that that's the case. So here's who MORL is. Kaplan University, for a long time, one of the nation's leading online providers, most of you are probably familiar with it, many people, certainly those who've served in the military, where it's very well-known, are thoroughly aware of Kaplan and its history. Its history's interesting, though, in this context. Mr. Stanley Kaplan, son of immigrants, chafed under a society in his time which too often excluded meritorious students from higher education. And I learned from our new partner today that he personally was prevented from attending medical school by the Jewish quotas that were unspoken but very firmly in place at the time, and therefore, he created a company to devise standardized testing which would reveal merit and make it much more difficult for universities to exclude people on the basis of race, or on the basis of faith, or on the basis of family background. And that was his life's mission. The business was eventually bought by the Washington Post Companies, then under the leadership of legendary Catherine Graham, subsequently, and today, led by her son Don, who's with us today and whom you'll have a chance to ask questions to in a minute. So this is a high-integrity company with deep roots that we admire and that frankly are closely aligned, I think, with the values and the ideals of Purdue University. The structure in this transaction will look like this. Purdue University today, as it's been for quite some time now, about a half a century, is a two-level organization, a research one and completely residential operation here at West Lafayette. Regional campuses, about 50 years old, which are non-residential but on-campus. Here is Kaplan University as a part of Graham Holdings. Just for clarity, Graham Holdings, which also operates a number of other companies in media and entertainment and other sectors, has four divisions. Kaplan University, one of the four, as you see here at the bottom. And the transaction involves only that piece of Kaplan, Inc. Kaplan University, one can loosely say, like other universities, can be seen as having academic operations and support operations. In this transaction, it is the academic operations which come to Purdue and become the third level of Purdue University. And at the same time, a support services agreement on a long-term basis will be struck so that the back-office work, which will continue to support the rest of Kaplan, will also support that, will not be duplicated here at Purdue. In the new three-level Purdue, note the stark differences, and I could use other criteria to illustrate this, but just take age. Here on this campus, average age of our undergraduates, around 20. At the regional campuses, higher than that, somewhere in the mid-20s, and as we looked at before, at New University, well into the 30s. Three different populations correspondingly, three different modes that we hope match the life circumstances of those we seek to serve. So just as it will fit, I think, rather logically into the Purdue we have known, we will operate it much the same way today that chancellors at PFW and PNW work directly with me. Tomorrow, the current president will soon be the chancellor, Betty Van den Bosch of New U will be there, companion, and work with me likewise. And Betty also will be available for your questions here just shortly. Here's what's left to do. With the approval today, the transaction will move forward. It requires really three sets of public approvals. The Commission on Higher Education, we hope will act this summer. The U.S. Department of Education, as for any university or any transition of this kind, will certify to the Higher Learning Commission that pending its approval, this New U is eligible for the range of federal programs and financial aid and so forth. And we hope and expect that by their November meeting, the Higher Learning Commission will complete its deliberations, and the New University can begin full operations. We sought the input of our faculty on a number of questions. There are all sorts of opportunities here for us all to think together about problems we might want to head off, but more importantly, about opportunities for taking advantage of this new wonderful asset that's about to join our family. And I'll just finish by sharing this. I believe he volunteered it, and I believe it's part of the materials that the media has here today, but one person toward the end that we did take into our confidence for purposes of seeking his reaction was the immediate past Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, and he had this to say. His reaction, I can just tell you, was instant. He grasped the concept, he grasped the opportunity, and gave us all, I think, a lot of fortification that what looked like a great idea to us would look similarly to others. So, Mr. Acting Chairman, I guess, and trustees, that's my summation of the request we put before you now. I believe Steve now will present the resolution on which we request your action.
Yes, I mean, we do have business to take care of today, and I know a lot of the trustees are wanting to make some comments, but we do need to authorize Purdue to complete the process and forming the new institution and to enter an agreement with Kaplan and acquire its institutional assets and operations. So we're going to ask Legal Counsel Schultz to summarize what the resolution would be, and then we'll ask for a motion. Steve?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, as you know, the trustees have had opportunity to receive and review the resolution, so I won't read it, as is our custom in regular meetings. It is available with our media team, and it will be posted on the website promptly after the meeting. There's a series of 10 recitals in the resolution that basically track the rationale for this action that President Daniels has already laid out in the presentation. In addition, the resolution ratifies the establishment of the entity known as New U for now. It authorizes and approves agreements relating to New U's acquisition of Kaplan University and its institutional assets and operations. It authorizes other actions that are necessary and appropriate to complete the transaction, and that includes seeking the approvals that the president explained in that next-step slide. And specifically, and as a matter of immediate action right after today's proceedings, it authorizes the execution and delivery of the transaction documents, which include the transfer agreement and the support services agreement that the president described in the slide on the structure of the transaction. So that is essentially how the resolution reads and what it will do.
Thank you, Steve. All of the trustees have had an opportunity to read and review in detail the complete resolution, and now you've had it.
I'm sorry, can you guys speak up just a little bit?
Sure. We've all had an opportunity as trustees to review and to read in detail all of the complete resolution, and now you all have heard an opportunity to hear the summary of it, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the formation of New U and approve the transaction. Do I have such a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Now it's been moved and seconded, now we can have some discussion, so trustees, without trying to jump in, especially with the ones on the phone, feel free to offer any of your thoughts or questions or comments about it, please.
Yeah, if I could, I guess I would start with, you know, when you start a transaction and everyone feels like it's a great idea on both sides, one of the first steps, if you're being responsible, is to put together a due diligence team. And the goal of a due diligence team is to find all the reasons not to do the deal, honestly. And we put our top people on it, Mr. Steve Schultz, Bill Sullivan, Jim Allman, and many others. Spent five months digging through every possible file, interviewing every possible person, I'm sure exhausting your entire team, and came back and reported to the board on a number of occasions, and every time it came back squeaky clean. And so it gives me a And so it gives me a great deal of confidence that we went through that effort and came back and know that, as best as you can know, that there's not going to be any big surprises. And therefore, risk is less. And the other piece of risk is, on top of the due diligence, the structure of the deal, I think, is very, very favorable to Purdue in terms of protecting the downside, as Mitch described. Worst case, there's a modest return in the early years, and if things go the way we hope, there could be some very, very positive returns. So the structure of the deal also gives us a lot of comfort on the risk. And so I'd like to thank Steve and Bill and everyone involved for all their hard work in doing that, because that's a really important part, I think, for the board to understand what kind of risk we're walking into.
Thanks, Mike.
Joanne? If I may, so I'm thrilled about this opportunity for the university, for the population that's out there, that's being underserved today, that as we look at the demographics and we see, as Mitch mentioned, 36 million adult learners, adult workers, 750,000 here in Indiana that have sought, who need and are seeking higher education, who have started their college degree and may not have finished it for a variety of reasons, be it they didn't have the time or flexibility to pursue a traditional degree. They sought financial and social benefits that higher education brings. So I'm excited about what this new university can do for that population, a very different population than we're serving today, and how that could benefit not only the university but those people in the state of Indiana. So I'm highly supportive of the initiative.
Thanks, Joanne.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, Sonny. I'm really proud that we're moving into this new area that I felt like we should be moving into, and we know it's going to grow by leaps and bounds in the future with all the computers that are around, and we just need to be there, and this is the perfect opportunity for us to get there. More importantly, it helps us honor our land-grant mission, and Purdue has been very instrumental in developing a land-grant mission in not only Indiana but across the Midwest. And this is furtherance of that exact mission, which is to provide education to people that might not normally be able to attend or to get that type of education. And we, as we extend these benefits of higher education to other people, I think it's very important, there's going to be millions of students in Indiana and across the nation that can now take benefit. This is not just Indiana, this is across the nation, it's worldwide. Kaplan University is worldwide, and we can really, we can give that Purdue-type education to millions more people.
Thanks, Sonny. Any trustee on the phone that'd like to add a comment?
Yeah, hi, Gary. It's Vanessa here. Well, as you all know, and certainly with Mitch's post-past on some of his slides, that we've discussed the concern that Purdue has not been making enough headway into this distance and online learning. So I think the availability of online coursework will only increase in demand nationwide over the months and years to come. So my perspective is I think this acquisition will give us a huge step forward in that direction and to bring Purdue into the 21st century, which I think is such an important point that Mitch made.
Thanks, Vanessa.
Gary, if I could, I'd like to add something. I'm getting ready to graduate here in a few weeks, and, you know, I've really enjoyed my time at Purdue and the residential experience that I've had here, but over our discussions, I've come to realize that that residential experience may not be for every student like me, and especially when I reflect back to a lot of my peers from the high school that I went to, a lot of them did not pursue higher education or get a residential experience like what I've had at Purdue. So thinking about this new university and the opportunity that it's going to create for a lot of my peers back home that I graduated high school with and many other people that are in similar life circumstances is just really exciting, because this university's going to create an education that's a lot more accessible and affordable for people that are in different stages of their lives and that may not necessarily need this residential experience that I've had. So I'm really excited about this opportunity.
Thanks, Cameron.
This is Trustee Spurgeon.
Hi, Tom.
You know, it's been my privilege to serve my alma mater on this board for many years. I'm the old guy. I've seen a lot of changes along the way, but I'm excited because I think this transaction has the potential to be among the most historic things I've had the pleasure to witness and in particular to be a part of. As we approach our 150th anniversary in a couple of years, I'm thinking about what Purdue's mission might look like and how far it might eventually reach. That is, if we seize this opportunity. And I, for one, think we should do just that if we want to be a model of the 21st-century land-grant university.
Great, thanks, Tom.
Hey, guys, this is Don, and first of all, I just want to thank Mitch and the team for leadership on this, and also, you know, you guys have heard me enough as you talk about really the benefits of a Purdue education, and Joanne mentioned, and lifting people to a higher level. And sometimes, we don't always realize what a Purdue education can mean. But even broader than that, a basic education, particularly one that has the rigors of our Purdue program associated with something that can help us with broader reach, is absolutely amazing, because there's a lot of people out there, Cameron's point, who don't have access to being able to come onto a campus. But for the blessings of God, I may not have been able to do it. But, you know, I was, but as I look at many people out there, I want them to have that same opportunity to get a great education. And if this helps us along the way, which it absolutely does, I think what we're going to see is that not only the brand of Purdue, but the lives of many people being touched because of the breadth of that education and the broader economic development in many communities around the country. And I think this is just a major, major, major move. I am proud to be a part of it and proud to be a part of this university and this board that is taking these broad steps to move in this direction. So thanks to everyone for this.
Thanks, Don.
You know, as the newbie, Malcolm DeCraeger, and the new guy on the board, and so it's been a real exciting time for me to watch these kinds of things begin to transpire here in the last five months. I'm also going to be one of the trustees that's designated to be on the new board with New U, as we'll call it for today. And that's a real privilege. I'm looking forward to kind of digging in to see what's going on, what we can do together, how we're going to really work together to make this thing flourish. You know, one of the other things that I would say is that when you're a new person to a board like this, there's a lot of things that you kind of watch to see body language and personalities come through. And as we've had the opportunity to get to know some of the leadership of Kaplan, it's a group of people that are not just, I think, mutually enjoyable, but I think they're incredibly qualified. And I think you're going to enjoy your relationship with Purdue, and hopefully, we will be able to move things for a really large amount of people together in the future. So thank you for being here today.
Okay, I think we've heard from all of our trustees other than our chairman. It's always great to do these kinds of things when your chairman's not around. Don, be careful, okay? That's not how we normally operate, but it is today. So now that we've had our discussion, let's call for a vote. Jim, I think we need to have a roll call for this vote, don't we?
Yes, I'll call each name individually. Trustee Castagna? Trustee Spurgeon?
Yes.
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Beck?
Yes.
Trustee Buie?
Yes.
Trustee DeCraeger?
Yes.
Trustee Klipch?
Yes.
Trustee Lehman?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
The vote passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. That concludes our agenda. Is there any other business?
Only that Counsel Schultz, you may now, as I understand the process, release the signature pages to our counterparties from Kaplan.
With that authorization and with the concurrence of Kaplan, we'll consider the signature pages on the documents released.
Thank you. What a great day. We've got over a million Hoosiers that this is really going to impact in a positive way. As probably, you know, I think it was referenced earlier, the state has made a major program and funded it called You Can Go Back. This started a year-plus ago, in fact, even more than that, targeting 200,000 of our Indiana residents that we need to influence and encourage to complete their unfinished college degree. And I think this acquisition fits perfectly in the strategy that the state and the mission does have. One of the groups, and it's mentioned a little bit, that I'm really pleased with, and as you saw up there, over a quarter of Kaplan's students are veterans. And we have 450,000 veterans in the state of Indiana that are of working age. And I personally feel it's very important that we address the educational needs in our state of these veterans. They have a lot to contribute, but they certainly need a program like Kaplan has been able to develop and been so successful. We rank 41st, I'm afraid, in our state in academic attainment and per capita income. And this initiative and this strategy that we're embracing today, if we reach the Hoosiers like I think we're going to be able to do, will potentially add a lot to our economic vitality of this fine state, so we're real excited. So this concludes the meeting. Anything else, Mitch, that you want to have?
Only to indicate that, just in case there are any questions from our friends from the media, as soon as we break, Don Graham and Andy Rosen and Betty Van den Bosch from Kaplan will join us up here, along with a couple of us will be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, everybody. The meeting is adjourned.
If it's all right, there are a list of people who are on the phone, and if it's okay with those in the room, can we start with them, just because of the difficulty of doing it their way? Is that all right?
We can't hear. There's a little noise on the phone there.
Somebody could turn up the volume a little bit, maybe?
Okay, that's good, thanks.
Is that better? A little better?
That's good, there was a little.
So I've been given a list of a number of folks who are elsewhere, and if it's okay, let's go down and see if any of you have questions. If not, just pass, and we'll move on. Goldie Blumenstike from the Chronicle?
Yes, a couple questions. Will the new institution be open access?
Was there a second question?
Gainful employment restrictions, will any of those remain?
I didn't hear it, did you?
Gainful employment, is this free Kaplan institutions from gainful employment?
Want to take that one? Is Andy Rosen answering?
Goldie, it's been to Andy. It's been Kaplan's practice to focus a lot on the return on investment for our programs. We've talked a lot with Purdue about that, and so while the gainful employment regulation won't apply--
What happens to those?
I'm sorry. Couldn't hear you, Goldie. What was the question? Why don't I just finish? While the terms of gainful employment won't apply, we fully expect to continue a deep focus on the return on educational investment for students.
You want to mention the cap as one means?
Do the rules, do you expect the rules themselves to apply?
You're breaking up, Goldie. Can you talk a little louder?
Do you expect the rules of gainful employment literally to--
The answer to that is no. This will be a public university, a public-interest corporation, and under the laws of the state of Indiana. Andy was just saying, if you couldn't hear, that although they won't apply, the commitment to a high rate, a high return on investment and the protection of students will continue to be policyed. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay, Rick Seltzer from Inside Higher Ed?
Thanks. First, can you give us any information on what kind of payment, the size of dollar payment that Purdue is making upfront for the deal?
$1. If you look at the 8K, the nature of the transaction is that the Kaplan, Inc. is contributing certain assets of Kaplan University in return for a long-term service contract.
Right, but so the--
Maybe we've lost you. We can come back. Paul Fain from Inside Higher Ed, are you on a separate line?
Yes.
Paul Fain, can you hear?
I'm sorry. Are you still there?
Yeah, we're waiting.
Okay, I'm happy. So I just want to make sure you cut out there. So the upfront payment is only $1, and then the bulk of the financial considerations are under the terms of service agreement?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any, can you offer any insight into what the pricing structure will be like for students for Kaplan under the deal?
Pricing structure for students?
Yeah, I mean, it'll start off with the same pricing, but there will be a new Board of Directors of the institution, and over time, pricing will be under the control of that new board.
Which will be controlled by--
Which will be made up of designees of Purdue University.
Yeah, I mean, that'll be months from now, so I think we reserve the right to come back on that. We have discussed the discount for Indiana students against whatever pricing obtains How about Caitlin Mulheer from Money Magazine? All right, Corinne?
Academic, yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Hi. So Purdue's taking over the academic operations as Kaplan--
We lost you after the word Kaplan.
Okay, so what's happening with the faculty at Kaplan and what sort of programs will be offered at this new university?
Betty, you want to go on that one?
The faculty of the new university will be exactly the same faculty who are faculty at Kaplan University today, and our programs will be exactly the same programs as we have today. Of course, programs evolve over time at the behest of the faculty and the approval of the Board of Trustees, so that will happen over time as conditions change and needs of our students change.
Corinne Journey from Forbes Magazine. How about Kim Hefling from Politico?
Yes, hi. It's been cutting in and out a little bit. Can you explain again how the pricing is working, what the university is paying, what this means exactly--
Sure. Sure, sorry for the-- On most days, we are a high-tech university, but we haven't mastered, apparently, telephones yet. Sorry. Yeah, so to reiterate, Kaplan is contributing the academic assets. Purdue is not paying, except for the legally nominal $1. The Kaplan will, in return, we've struck a long-term service agreement which really incentivizes both parties to grow the university, and that's how Kaplan, if we're successful, will earn its value out. Want to say that any different way, Andy?
I would just add that Graham Holdings' company filed an 8K this morning, which describes in much more detail the financial relationship between the parties. And to address what I think was another question, although this kind of got on this side, too, it also talks about the kinds of services that Kaplan will provide and what Purdue, you know, what the New U does and how Kaplan University supports it.
Dan McGowan from Inside Indiana Business. Haley Colombo from the Indianapolis Business Journal.
Hi there, guys. I was just wondering if you could explain the, any state and federal approvals you'll have to go through and whether you face any hurdles-- you'll have to go through and whether you face any hurdles there, uh, what hurdles you'll have to, to go over?
Never take anything for granted, uh, uh, well, no, I won't say it that way. Never take anything for granted. And, uh, but we have, uh, we believe this is such a sound transaction, so in the public interest. As I illustrated, it squarely meets the, uh, uh, the top priority of the Indiana Higher Education Commission, so we would feel optimistic about their, uh, reaction. It squarely meets, uh, look at Arnie Duncan's statement, we think a, a national need. It, it, and that approval goes to, uh, to the Higher Learning Commission, which just approved Kaplan for another 10 years, and, uh, we are reasonably confident we'll continue Purdue's accreditation. So, um, take nothing for granted, but we are, um, we, it's certainly our expectation, and we'll be working hard the next few months to, to be ready to start quickly when we get that.
Thanks.
Okay? Uh, Jillian Berman from Market Watch.
Hi, thanks so much for my question. Um, I know, you know, over the past several months, um, you know, for-profit colleges have been, you know, they've, they've kind of gotten a bad rap, um, in the media and, you know, from, from regulators. Are you guys worried about how that, you know, bad rap might affect, um, Purdue's brand or the, you know, sort of the, the brand of the degrees that you guys are already offering?
Well, this is Mitch, I'll go first. Well, of course, uh, effective, uh, today or upon the approvals, this becomes a public university, so it's a moot point. Um, you know, I'll just say that I've always thought the right question, um, in higher education had nothing to do with business form, it had to do with outcomes. And this, uh, this organization has been producing them, as we've illustrated, and doing so with integrity. But, uh, in any event, it, it becomes a, shall we say, academic matter because the, the new you will be a public entity, uh, in this state and will, will operate as, as such going forward. I'm going to ask Don Graham, who, uh, has, of course, so many years of familiarity with the sector, to add something.
Yeah, Jillian, we, uh, your, your question's right when you say there's been a lot of criticism of the sector, and we've tried to respond, uh, by, uh, proving what we've always believed, which is that we were doing a good job for our particular students. This is a transaction between us at Kaplan and Purdue, and, uh, we don't, it doesn't have anything to do with the sector as a whole. One change in the debate that's only been possible in the last year, the governor showed on a slide, the incomes of our graduates two years after graduation and five years after graduation. Those are the average earnings of our graduates holding those degrees. The, that comes from government data. It comes from a state government database of 41 states, and that data wasn't available until about 12 months ago, at least to us. And to us, it isn't that this silences all critics and answers all questions. We remain ready to, or listen to any questions, but it is a heck of an answer to our effectiveness at our, at Kaplan University's traditional mission, which is to prepare stu-, prepare students for employment. Purdue has a different mission, and we, we have, having spent our last 30 years in education, and Andy himself having built this university from 200 students to today, we are beyond, we are excited, uh, by joining an institution of the eminence of this one, and by having, uh, a leadership that wants to expand, uh, our student body into new programs, new fields, and, uh, particularly service to this state.
And our last, uh, question on the phone, make come, from Danielle Gabriel Douglas at the Washington Post. Hi Danielle.
Hi.
Lost you there, pal.
Whatever profits comes through this new entity for the, for a set term?
We only got the last part, Danielle. Do you mind trying again?
Sure. Uh, does this essentially mean that Kaplan will share in the profits of this new entity or the set term of the servicing agreement?
Uh, it doesn't. Kaplan will be paid a fee as a percentage of revenue over the course of, of the term, but it is not a profit share.
Okay.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry, did you have anything further?
What is it if it's not a profit share?
It's a, it's a, a fee that is a percentage of revenue. So, if, I guess what, the way you can interpret that is, if the university makes more money, that money goes to Purdue, not to Kaplan, on the bottom line.
And so then what's that percentage?
Again, all, all of the details of the transaction are, are set out in the 8K.
Which has already been filed.
Which has been filed, yeah. And is publicly available right now.
All right. Okay, let's go to any questions in the room?
President Daniels, um, was there any other, uh, may I hold you, your own courier? Um, is there any other for-profit institutions that were considered and vice versa for Kaplan University? Do you consider any other public institutions or private institutions to help them?
Want to go first? You go first. Well, we looked at the whole landscape, but, um, I'll just say that when I discovered in, in a conversation with Don, that we might have common interests, and took a look at what I considered the superior performance record, integrity, lineage of Kaplan, we locked in on them as a partner and have, and had no similar conversations with anyone else. If that conversation hadn't happened, we might well have at least put out some feelers. But, uh, the minute, back in November, on the 17th of November, according to my notes, um, that I, um, uh, discovered that they might have a similar interest, this became our, uh, our objective.
And I would actually just say the exact same thing about Kaplan, which is, uh, the, when, when we thought there might be a, uh, an interest at Purdue with Governor Daniels, uh, there was no other, no other possibility was nearly as appealing, uh, for Kaplan. Um, I've said many times, I feel, I feel Purdue, uh, probably more than any other institution in the country, has lived up to the land-grant mission while becoming an elite institution. Uh, there are institutions that have done one or the other, but, but Purdue continues to blend that, and you can feel it tangibly on the campus, how much that land-grant mission means here. And that institution, uh, led by somebody like President Daniels, was a, an enormously appealing, uh, potential, uh, party to work with. And, you know, we've built this institution over a long period of time. We are turning it over to someone. You want to make sure that the, the party you're turning it over to is someone you feel absolutely confident in, and, and that was easy here.
Are you aware of any other partnerships that are similar to this in the past, or any existing that are similar to this?
No.
Kevin?
President Daniels, following up on that, but I was actually wondering about how cutting-edge this is, give me an idea of what this really means, and is this a trend, or can this be something that other universities will now follow?
Well, that'll be up to other universities. The question for people on the phone was, is this a first? How different is it? Will other universities emulate it? Um, I guess, first thing is, no, it's unique. Everyone that, to whom we have, um, mentioned it has said so. A public university coming together with an established, um, online, uh, university, I, I think is, uh, by any definition, a national first. Uh, beyond that, all I'll say is, we got the best option out there, so it's, others can try to emulate it if they want, but they'll, uh, it'll be a pale imitation if they do.
Was there a laugh, a laugh? Was there a moment when you said, okay, this, this is where I need to go and want?
In the presentation, I, I tried to take you through, as I said, our confrontation of three realities. Um, that, uh, first of all, we weren't, we needed a third level of Purdue for our third century. That there was a huge population, we couldn't honestly say, uh, we were, uh, offering the benefits of higher education to. Secondly, that online was growing, it was going to be probably the principal vehicle, if anyone was going to reach that population, in their 30s, in their, in their working lives and so forth. And finally, we faced up to the fact that we couldn't build that ourselves. We are not, we are not constructed to do it here. Too slow, too, uh, process-oriented, and too far behind, frankly. And so, uh, we came to that conclusion last summer, and subsequently, while looking around, we discovered that maybe there was a, a partnership with, with this wonderful organization that would allow us to, to meet those, to act on those three realities.
Uh, what was the reaction, uh, from the faculty when you told them? Uh, I was sitting next to David Sanders, you can read my tweet about what I think he was thinking, but what was the reaction?
I can only, well, we, you were, um, I guess you weren't there, David, but weren't supposed to be there, but you're pretty good, you might have been. One of those disguises you show up in sometimes. No, um, well, I, we didn't have any questions. I, I, I met, uh, Mark Rogers, who was our AAUP president outside, and he was effusive about it, which I take as a, as a, a good sign. Uh, you know, it's a lot to take in, brand new. I will say that we, uh, there are a number of our faculty, Frank Dooley and John Harbury, who are sitting right in front of you, who have been a, as part of this for a long time, along with the deans, and, uh, I think unanimously, we all see it as a great opportunity. Uh, on a faculty of 20-some-hundred, there'll be, you know, there'll be some natural questions, and somewhere out there, there'll be someone who disagrees, but, um, um, my sense is that the, uh, the ethos with which we're approaching this is something that is shared broadly. I'm talking about the land-grant spirit, uh, very broadly shared here at Purdue. And I think the facts about, uh, where the education marketplace is going are irrefutable.
What is the name of this, and will it carry a Purdue brand? Will it be on par with a Purdue degree, or is it, as, uh, the new chancellor says, the same classes that Kaplan has now?
All TBD. I mean, we, uh, in fact, we start, we, we invited the faculty, and as we invite many others, to help us think that through. There'll, there'll be a lot goes into that, but, um, uh, we're going to proud, this is proudly going to be a part of Purdue University. The ques-, the question of exactly how that's presented and how it's named, we're, we're all, we're listening and, uh, we'll be thinking and probably researching it. Andy, you want to say anymore, or Betty?
No, I think that's right. It, you know, the, this institution, like any institution, will evolve over time, and, uh, it'll evolve under the leadership of the Board of Trustees, the chancellor, and, uh, but I think that the, from a Purdue perspective, uh, people have been very clear that this should be at the quality level that the Purdue name represents, and we expect that that's, that's the way it's going to evolve.
So, is it going to be on a similar level to all the names behind you with IPF? And I know you had talked about that, um, in your presentation with IPFW and Calumet and our Northwest I Spoke Now. Is that going to be something, you know, when you go to the Purdue website, that that is one of the top things on, you know, this, whatever this new university will be called?
Yeah, I fully expect that. I, I say, we've been operating for 50 years in, in two dimensions, two levels, and then now it'll be three, representing three populations, all of whom, in this economy, in this world, need and deserve, um, the kind of education we believe we can provide.
Uh, you talk about online being the future, uh, and you also talked about how this is the first deal of this kind. Uh, does that make this even more important to get ahead of the future so that time other schools get this? You guys have already kind of worked the kinks out?
I'll just put it this way, um, I, I think if we, uh, take advantage of all the, all the learning, all the technology, all the head start that, uh, Kaplan has devised over time, uh, Purdue, uh, has every, uh, uh, expectation of leading the online, um, revolution as opposed to chasing it.
Yeah, President Daniels, you've talked a lot since you've come here about the pajama test, and really talking about the, the benefits and what Purdue has to do to separate itself as a residential university. Does this water that down? Does this water down the residential degree?
No, it augment, it, it supplements, uh, our mission. The whole point when I use that little catchphrase is that for residential, um, um, education, so-called traditional education, to remain vital, we have to keep adding value here. Uh, we have to add dimensions that are, uh, impossible, even in the holographic future we may be headed for. Impossible to replicate any other way. That's a completely different thing than recognizing that a 34-year-old, single mom who's working and take, trying to take care of kids at the same time will never come to this campus, and will be left behind if we don't have something very different, but also of very, very high quality. That's the, that's the person, you know, that, that the inner-city African-American, uh, trying to make it, uh, in, in his or her 30s, um, on a, on a, a low salary, he would love to see that increase that, that Kaplan has been bringing two and five years out. Um, that's a completely different, uh, objective, and the challenge will still remain exactly as you and I have discussed it. Uh, to be able to say to younger people, we've got something extra that fits your life, uh, at this point, uh, you know, come to West Lafayette, uh, or come to, to Calumet, et cetera.
How do you do, I'm just, I'm sorry, how do you do that sales job to the undergrads who are coming, or graduate students who are coming from all over the world? How do you sell that residential?
Yeah.
That residential message?
Well, you've, you've, you've covered so many of the things that we're working on. Uh, you'll, you come here, uh, our faculty will show, take a personal interest in you. In fact, they're expected to as a, as a, a part of advancing their own careers. Uh, you'll have lab opportunities, you'll have internship opportunities. We're able to teach you in a collaborative, hands-on mode in much of our, the so-called active learning, which is, uh, possible when you're physically present and working in a team together, all these sorts of things. And by the way, we'll keep the cost down, so that the value of what, of what you're getting is higher than it would be if you were being charged more somewhere else. But, that's our constant challenge, that's our stay awake at night issue. And I think we're meeting the pajamas test right now, but, uh, we better keep moving, we better keep adding value, we better keep controlling costs if we want that equation to still look good. Because the new you, these folks really know what they're doing, and one day, they may say to young people, you know, we can do it just as well, and you don't have to go to Calumet, you don't have to drive over to PFW. And, uh, you know, if, if that day arrives, God bless whoever brought it, but in the meantime, uh, we, we see very different audiences with different needs, and we want to serve them all.
Amen, but I can, I can tell you from our industry that today, uh, 18-year-olds, uh, if, if they come to our website, we don't, we, we do not expect that student to go to an online university. When they think of a university, they think of a place like, a wonderful place like this if they're lucky enough to qualify for it. President Daniels outlined very well that, that when he put up that list of, uh, risk factors and some of the demographics of our students, the online experience isn't what most 18-year-olds want, but it is what mo-, you know, uh, everybody went to high school and everybody remembers that some people in our high school class didn't go on to college, and everybody remembers that some students came to college and said, doggone it, I just can't do this work, or something happened. You know, there was an illness in their family, they had to drop out. Later in life, when you have a job, when you have children, as the governor said, I, I once had a job where I had to work shifts around the clock, and it was a job where education counted in the opportunity for promotion, but you couldn't possibly get to a campus. And, and it is that type of student, the, the one with a job and a family, where online education just fits perfectly. And I would say that's pretty close to 100% of, of students we've got. Certainly, they are, uh, they are employed by and large, and, and, Betty, do you want?
That's right, that's right. And you know, the, the students we serve today are not probably student, now I don't know for sure, but they're not probably many students who have a degree from Purdue, or who have part of a degree from Purdue, but there may be some. But there are many, many people who started somewhere and didn't finish. some. But there are many, many people who started somewhere and didn't finish. And it's our responsibility to help them. Because if you start something and don't finish, there's not anybody who said, well, there are a few and they're all in Silicon Valley, people who say, well, I didn't need university. That's not what's going on here. These are students who need it, who know they need it, and something happened. And we're going to help them succeed. That's what Kaplan University has been doing and that's what we will continue to do.
President Daniels, you showed a slide earlier about the average age of the student body, both of you, your university and Kaplan. I'm guessing that was most current numbers, but has that number come down in the past couple of years already? And do you guys expect that number to get closer and closer together? And does this move help, you know, brace that for the future?
You must be talking about the Kaplan number?
Yeah, well, both your age and their age. I mean, the 15 to 20-year difference has their, I guess their age has probably come down more than yours.
I'll let them answer.
Yeah, our, when I joined Kaplan University approximately 10 years ago, a little less than, the average age was 33. This year, it's 34. Some years, it's 32. It's been there for quite some time. And I don't know that it will ultimately stay there, but for right now, we serve a broad range, with the exception, we have very few people who are 18 to 22. We don't do a good job with them.
Anybody else? We thank you all for coming and all the time you devoted to this.